I pledge allegiance.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight. Are we in business? Will be our minutes. All of us have had the opportunity to read. Oh, excuse me. Diane or Angela would you like to take a roll call?
We were trying to get your microphone. We were calling the microphones. You can't hear us.
Okay.
Technical difficulties.
Adam, do you hear now?
You keep me straight.
Alright, you're all set.
So we'll go ahead and do roll call, please. Planning Commissioner Laura Wood. Commission Chair Jeffrey Parker is absent. Planning Commissioner Eda Journey.
Present.
And Planning Commissioner Nancy Watt.
Present.
Okay, we've all had the opportunity to read the music, sorry, I mean the minutes. Are there any corrections that any of you have? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion on a second. To prevent minutes as they are written. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, tonight we have two hearings. We have two hearings that are gonna take some time tonight, but we would invite anyone that has an issue that is not on our agenda. Okay, that takes care of that. So with that said, let's go to our public hearings. The first hearing. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for a three-foot setback from existing dwellings to the property line proposed in application PLA 23-06, resulting in a total of approximately six feet between dwellings. The subject property is owned residential high density, which is R3. The comprehensive plan designation is medium density, R2. In the R3 zone, the minimum interior side setback is five feet and the minimum front setback is 15 feet. Application VR 23-05 is being filed simultaneously with application PLA 23-06. Application PLA 23-06 is an administrative decision and is not decided upon by the planning commission. However, the approval of PLA 23-06 is contingent on the approval of application VR 23-05. The applicant is Laura LaRocque from Udell Engineering and Land Surveying LLC. The property owner is Deborah Jensen. The file number is VR 23-05. The property location is at 1589 and 1591 41st Avenue, Sweet Home Oregon 97386. Identified on the Lynn County Assessors map as 13S, 01E, 28CD, tax lot 45. And the rest of it is regular date. Okay, we have some missing items. Okay, I'm gonna read the following. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. So regarding our first application, is there any personal bias by the commission?
No.
Is there any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
And I would just confess, I did drive out and look at it today. Okay, the staff report, so I do review the application.
I will be moving the staff report. Just too quick, there was two typos, but not enough to make it happen for a brand new one. So on page two of the variance, staff report, under timelines and periods, within 100 feet, should have been 300 feet. And then on page three, 3A, the last year of staff finding that says PLA 23-23-06, it should just be 23-06. There's only typos, but one I turned it up. Alright, so here's here the variance application 23-05. The subject property is in the residential high density zone, according to plan designation as medium density residential. Based on the review of the PNA pub plain insurance map, panel 41043C0914, due date to 2029/2010, the subject property is not in the special four hazard area. The subject properties do not show weapons, water, or oil on the property, such as the Sweet Home local weapons inventory and the national weapons inventory map. Proposed area A has access to 41st Avenue, proposed area B has existing access to 41st Avenue and a driveway through proposed area A. Area A and B have water and sewer services in 41st Avenue, and activity adjustment proposed area A shall abut approximately 40 feet of 41st Avenue. The applicant shall ensure that the appropriate easements are afforded for access to and from area B to 41st Avenue. Jump down to section three, review and design criteria. The variance is necessary because the subject development code provision does not account for special or unique physical circumstances of the subject site, existing development patterns, or adjacent land uses. A legal law determination may be sufficient evidence of hardship for purposes of approving a variance. Staff findings, the applicant is seeking a variance to allow for a three-foot setback from existing dwellings to property line proposed in application PLA 23-06, resulting in a total of approximately six feet between dwellings. The dwellings and accessory structures are pre-existing. The dwellings of proposed area A enclose into the minimum size setback by two feet, and the dwellings of proposed area B enclose into the minimum depth setback by twelve feet. The minimum interior side setback in an R3 zone is five feet and the minimum depth setback in an R3 zone is 15 feet. Approval of property line adjustment application PLA 23-06 is contingent on the approval of the setback variance proposed in this application. These such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant possessed by the owners of other properties in the same vicinity or district. An economic hardship shall not be the basis for variance request. Staff finds that the subject property abuts similar size of residential properties in the R3 zone to the south, east, and west. The proposed variance shall allow the applicant to preserve and enjoy the property rights the same as the owners of other R3 zone properties in the vicinity. The authorization of such variance will not materially detrimental be material detrimental to the public or address to property in the vicinity or district where the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. Staff finds that the variance will not be materially detrimental to what or address to the property in the vicinity or district where the property is located. The variance does not conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. These, the need for variance is not self-imposed by the applicant or property owner. For example, the variance request does not arise as a result of a property line adjustment or land division if we will previously granted to the applicant. The subject property has two pre-existing single-family dwellings, the climate usable code does not allow for two single-family dwelling units on one lot. The applicant is proposing to separate the dwellings with property line adjustment application PLA 23-06 filed simultaneously with the variance application. Separating the dwellings will bring the use into conformance with current code. However, to separate the dwellings, the property line adjustment will not comport to the site and prevent setbacks of the R3 zone. Approval of the property line adjustment is contingent on the approval of the variance. These, the variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate the identified hardships. These, staff finds that the subject property has two pre-existing single-family dwellings. The request to allow a three-foot setback from the existing dwellings to the property line proposed in the application PLA 23-06 is the minimum variance to alleviate the identifying conformance with R3 zone land use. According to the site map provided by the applicant, there is approximately six feet level between the existing dwellings. All applicable building code requirements and engineering design standards shall be met. Staff finds there are pre-existing dwellings and accessory structures on the subject property. If approved, any future developments shall comply with the city of Sweet Home engineering standards, Sweet Home municipal code 17.14, residential high density R3 zone, and the Oregon residential special code. Staff recommendations, staff finds applicant has requested the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship due to the pre-existing placement of the single-family dwelling on the subject property. Staff has recommended conditions of approval listed below. Conclusions, the applicant, the application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in section three above. Any modifications to the conditions listed below would require approval in accordance with provisions of law, example variance, subsequent land use, etc. Conditions of approval. One, administrative approval and compliance with the conditions of approval for property line adjustment application PLA 23-06. Two, any future developments shall comply with the city of Sweet Home engineering standards and development standards of Sweet Home municipal code 17.14.070. Planning Commission action, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. Appeal period, the staff recommends that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of the decision as mailed. Order after the planning commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order shall memorialize the decision and provide an official list of conditions if any that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing, we're receiving testimony, the planning commission has opted to approve the following. One, move to approve application VR 23-05 and thereby permit the variance for the subject lot located at 1589 and 1591 41st Avenue, Sweet Home Oregon 97386, identified on the Lynn County Assessors map as 13S, 01E, 28CD, tax lot 04500. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application VR 23-05 and thereby deny the request for the variance for the subject lot located at 1589 and 1591 41st Avenue, Sweet Home Oregon 97386, identified on the Lynn County Assessors map as 13S, 01E, 28CD, tax lot 04500. Adopting the findings of fact, setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date of next search or for other.
We would invite anybody to come forward that are in favor of this application. Or the, excuse me, the applicant.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying. My address is already on the record. So thank you, staff, for giving a presentation of the staff report. I won't spend too much more time on this application. Essentially, the request is a variance for allowing a lesser setback standard. On this particular one, the property owner owns three different adjacent properties or abutting properties. Two single-family detached dwellings were constructed on one of the lots. The proposal adjusts the property line to separate those two dwellings, which results in a total setback between the two dwellings of six feet, three feet to each property line. This setback does not trigger any concerns through the building code for fire, life, and safety. All accesses are all dwellings are able to have utilities and driveway access to the site. And in this zone, there are dwellings that are allowed to be constructed right on property lines, at the property lines with a zero setback. So even the lesser setback, it does not cause any sort of major differences in the construction pattern of that community. So with that, I'll wrap up my presentation and answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any. So just to clarify, one of the houses needs an easement in order to have access to 41st Avenue, and that's...
Yes, so the configuration of the two lots, it was at the end of a cul-de-sac. As the lots were originally plotted, both parcels would have had street fundage. The proposed property line adjusts the lines and it creates a landlocked parcel, one that does not have street fundage, but would have access by easement. The access, it might be hard to see on this map, but it's actually on lot 21, just to the south of the existing homes. This is the third lot that the property owner has. Technically, an easement cannot be recorded to grant yourself rights because you already own the property. But if they ever sell the property, an easement could be put in place when the deed changes for that property. But they will create separate driveway accesses to this one and a shared driveway situation if lot 21 was ever to be developed.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions of the applicant?
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Were there any in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any in the audience who would like to speak against this application? Are there any in the audience who would like to speak neutrally, neither for nor against the application? Okay, we'll close this hearing at 6:53 and entertain some discussion among the planning commission.
Can staff give a little information about how two houses ended up on a lot that should only have one?
It was historically that way. It was just a pre-existing, nonperforming lot, and it's the same family that owns all of it, and so they, you know, and the only way to divide it is to go between the houses. But it had been that way for years. So in order, in order for them to divide it, the only place to...
Any other questions?
I didn't go back real far to see it, but it's been there for a long time, so I can't give you dates of how long it's been.
It seems to predate when we administered our own building permits, and so it could be that it was a mistake between coordination between the county and the city. It's unknown.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? The purpose of dividing it right now, as I understand it, is that it is in violation because two houses on one lot are not permitted. I don't know if they have any intent of selling one or not selling one, but it looks like it's a situation we've inherited and is already there, and it doesn't matter what we do, it's not gonna be totally corrected, so we better make a compromise of some kind.
It isn't going to make this lot. It's already gonna have a house on it, so it's not gonna be developed more. It isn't, it isn't for developing anything else, it's just for straightening up the previous...
It's designated high density?
It's R3, so it could be developed, the lot.
So, yes, this, this could be developed further, but this, this change would bring it more into conformance. One thing I would add is that if there were no house here, certainly there would be no need for the variance, but also we would apply our setback to whatever proposed home was to be built. So any further development of this property would have to meet current code.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
That, that was my question.
I would entertain comments from each of you regarding the decision we will make. Laura?
Well, I'm leading the motion to approve because it seems like this is what needs to happen, then we at least have both homes on separate lots, which is much more in compliance with what our city wants. And there's no place to draw the lot line except between those two houses, which only has so many feet in between, so.
Six feet, and it's gonna be three and three.
Exactly, so.
So I agree with Laura. I mean, this is a little bit of a fluky thing, and how do you correct a fluky thing? Well, you do your best. So I think it makes sense to separate the two houses on separate pieces of property, and this is the way, this is the only way it can happen.
Mary?
I, I agree that trying to clean up a previous situation, that looks like about the best place to, about the only place to divide it, and would bring it more in compliance with current situation, so I see no reason why we shouldn't approve it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application VR 23-05 and thereby permit the variance for the subject lot located at 1589 and 1591 41st Avenue, Sweet Home Oregon 97386, identified on the Lynn County Assessors map as 13S, 01E, 28CD, tax lot 04500. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second.
We have a motion on a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Or do we want a roll call vote? Thank you for coming. This is approved. Our next application, the applicant is requesting to, excuse me, I'll open this at 6:58. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 41.03 acres, 1,787, 269 square feet, property into 161 total lots over the span of four phases. Phase one includes 41 residential lots and one stormwater tract. Phase two includes 43 residential lots and one stormwater tract. Phase three includes 46 residential and two stormwater tracts. Phase four includes 27 residential lots. The subject properties are north of Coulter Lane, east of 43rd Avenue, south of 45th Avenue, and south of 46th Avenue. The subject properties are identified on the Lynn County Tax Assessors map, number 13S, 01B, 33D, tax lots 2800 and 3502. Lot sizes shall range in size from approximately 7,029 square feet to approximately 28,907 square feet. All lots shall be eligible to be developed with single-family dwellings or duplexes. The subject properties are in the residential low-density R1 zone. I'll just mention this applicant. Application SD 23-01 is reliant on the approval of application PLA 23-05. Application PL 323-05 is an administrative decision and is not decided upon by the planning commission. Applications SD 23-01 and PLA 23-05 are being filed simultaneously. Let's turn the time over to the staff. Excuse me, I will do that. Is there any, any bias in my view of planning commission?
None.
Well, any conflict of interest?
No.
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 Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
Okay, and I will read the following. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to be, to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Then we'll invite a staff report.
Just a couple things, this was not my week. One typo on this one, the footer. I had corrected, but I think I missed one of the...
I had to correct it, but I think I mentioned the typo years out again. The other part is Diane gave you, there's two extra comments that came in after your packets, but you've had a chance to read them, so I'm just bringing them up. All right, hold on, proceeds. Application SD 23-01. The application under consideration is proposed tentative subdivision plan. The proposed subdivision will be completed in four phases and include 150 seven residential lots, three stormwater tracts. The subdivision approval is reliant on the property line adjustment application being filed concurrently. The subject properties are located east of 43rd Avenue, north and east of Coulter Lane, the southernmost end of 45th Avenue and the southernmost end of 46th Avenue, and is identified by Lynn County Assessors Map, 13S01E33D, tax lots 2800 and 3502. Subject property is in the residential low-density and complies with plan designation as equivalent to residential. Based on the review of the FEMA flood insurance rate map panel, 41043C0914G and 41043C0918G dated September 9, 2010, the subject properties are not in the special flood hazard area. The subject property does show wetlands and waterways on the property depicted on the Sweet Home Local Land Management map. SSR. SSR action. For the Department of State Lands, wetland management, spots on the. The project has. On site. Access, proposed parcel one has access from. Don't have access. There are city water and sewer. Running one, running north. Funding and one running north, south on proposed. All right, minimum lot area. Minimum lot area shall conform to the requirements of the zoning district in which the parcel is located. Access easements or the access strip to a flag lot shall not be included in the calculation of lot area for purposes of compliance with any minimum lot size provision of this developer code. Staff lines, the subject lots are zoned residential located in City R1, the minimum lot area in R1 zone. All right, I'll start over back at A. A, minimum lot area. Minimum lot area shall conform to the requirements of the zoning district. Access easement or access strip to flag lot. They'll not be included in the calculation of lot area or purposes of determining. Subject lots are zoned residential located in City R1, the minimum lot area in the R1 zone is 7,000 square. Based on the submitted site plan, both lot sizes shall range. Lot sizes shall range in size from approximately 7,029 to approximately 20,900. Based on the above findings, staff lines, the application complies with these criteria. Lot width and depth. The depth of a lot or parcel shall not be more than three times the width of lots. Four parcels created for commercial, industrial, or public use shall be exempt from depth ratios. Based on the submitted site plans, no depth of lot or parcel exceeds three times the width of the parcel. Access, all lots, all new lots or parcels shall have access, shall access a public street, except that residential lots or parcels may be accessed by a private access easement developing in accordance with the. On chapter 17.42, when it is determined that a public street access is one infeasible due to parcel-shaped terrain or location of existing structures, two, unnecessary to provide for future development of adjoining property, three, no more than 10% of a lot within a subdivision may be accessed via a private street or private access easement. Staff findings, based on the submitted site plans, all new lots or parcels shall have access to. Shall access a public street. No lot within the subdivision is accessed via private street or private access easement. Based on the above findings, staff finds, the application complies with these criteria. E flag lots, flag lots shall be subject to the following development standards. That access strip shall be a minimum 20 feet. The improved surface shall be a minimum 14 feet. Access strip shall not be included in the lot area calculation. The length of the access strip exceeds 150. Partial lot shall include a current area for applicable fire district requirements. And the applicant has not proposed any flag lots. Through lots, through lots shall be avoided except for essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic, traffic arteries, adjacent non-residential activities, or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography. Screening or buffering pursuant to the first chapter 17.54 may be required during the review of the land division request. Based on the submitted site plans, the applicant has proposed one through lot, lot 14 in phase four. There is a proposed fire turnaround hammerhead at the rear of lot 14 along C Street making the mark of lot 14 along B Street. Lot sidelines. The sidelines of lots, as far as practical rules, shall run at right angles to the public street, private street, or private access easement upon which the lot or parcel faces. As depicted on attachment B of the proposed parcels would have sidelines that are at or very close to right angles to the public streets. Based on the above findings, staff lines, the application complies with these criteria. Utility easements. Utility easements shall be provided on lots where necessary to accommodate public utilities. Easement widths shall conform to adopted engineering standards. Based on the submitted site plan, the applicant has proposed public utilities to be located in the public right-of-way and utility easements throughout the subdivision. Attachments B exhibits F through F9 show where those are to be located. 1758040A, general. The length, width, and shape of blocks shall be designed with regard to providing adequate building sites for the use contemplated, consideration of needs for convenient access, circulation, control, and safety off-street, including pedestrian and bicyclists, and recognition of limitations and opportunities of topography. Staff findings, the subject lots are zoned residential low-density R1. The minimum lot area in the R1 zone is 7,000 square feet. Based on the submitted site plans, the proposed lot sizes shall range from approximately 7,029 square feet to approximately 28,907 square feet. The lot sizes provide adequate building sites for single-family dwellings and duplexes. Based on the submitted site plan, the applicant. Proposed local street widths of 40 feet for A Street and 45 feet for B Street, C Street, D Street, 44th Avenue, 45th Avenue, and 46th Avenue. Existing Coulter Lane is 40 feet. Applicant has proposed a seven-foot sidewalk and curb width for pedestrian traffic. Staff finds that the length, width, and shape of the block provides adequate building sites, and the applicant considers safe pedestrian and bicycle traffic immediate access and traffic circulation. Based on the above findings, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Sizes, blocks shall not exceed 1,000 feet in, in between street lines with preferred length of 500 feet. Exceptions are permitted for blocks adjacent to arterial streets or if the previous development pattern or topographical conditions justify a greater length. The recommended minimum distance between collector street intersections with arterial streets is 1,800 feet. Staff findings, based on the submitted site plans, the length of the subdivision blocks range from approximately 371 feet to approximately 567 feet. The width of the subdivision blocks range from approximately 82 feet to approximately 200 feet. Based on the above findings, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Traffic circulation. The subdivision shall be laid out to provide safe, convenient, and direct to vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to nearby residential areas, neighborhood activity centers, such as schools and parks, shopping areas, and employment centers, and provide safe, convenient, and direct traffic circulation. At a minimum, nearby means the distance from subdivision boundary of 40 miles for pedestrians and 1 mile for bicyclists. Per the KED engineering comments in Section 2, the development will require a traffic impact study. An increase of 300 trips is the threshold at which a study is required. Considering all phases of development, average daily trips would increase by a minimum of approximately 1,480. Connectivity. To achieve the objective and see traffic circulation above, the city may require the following. Stubbing streets where the potential exists for additional residential development on adjacent property. The city may require reserved strips and street plugs to preserve the objectives of street extensions. Accessways. Public accessways to provide a safe, efficient, and direct connection to cul-de-sac streets to pass through oddly shaped or blocks longer than 600 feet to provide for networks of public paths creating access to nearby residential areas, neighborhood activity centers such as schools and parks, shopping areas, and employment centers. Staff findings, per the KED engineering comments in Section 2, a one-foot wide reserve strip should be dedicated to the city at the end of each incomplete street. And all hammerhead-style fire department turnarounds should be constructed as temporary measures. It appears that this applies to exhibit E2, east end of A Street, B Street, C Street, D Street, and Coulter Lane. Any additional hammerheads that are being put in place until a subsequent phase of street construction is initiated, as indicated in the plan. All streets that will not be extended in a subsequent phase of construction should end with a cul-de-sac as opposed to a hammerhead. The streets that were identified as streets that will not be extended into a subsequent phase of construction are described at the eastern end of C Street, the eastern end of A Street, the eastern end of Coulter Lane, and the southern end of 46th Avenue. E collector and arterial connections, accessway, bikeway, or sidewalk connections with adjoining arterial and collector streets shall be provided if any portion of the size of arterial or collector street frontage is over 600 feet from either subdivision access street or other accessway. The placement of an accessway may be modified or eliminated natural features such as diverse topography history and wetlands improve such a connection. Based on the submitted site plans, A Street, C Street, and Coulter Lane will connect to 43rd Avenue. 44th Avenue extends from A Street to Coulter Lane. 45th Avenue, 46th Avenue will be extended from North property avenue to D Street. And applicant has proposed a seven-foot wide curb sidewalk throughout the subdivision design. Design standards. Pedestrian bicycle accessways shall meet the following design standards. Minimum dedicated width 10 feet, minimum improved width 8 feet. The accessway shall be designed to prohibit vehicle traffic. Staff findings, no pedestrian or bicycle accessways are shown on the submitted site plans. 1758060, improvements. The following improvements shall be required for all subdivisions. Frontage improvements, half-street improvements designed to the city's engineering standards shall be required for all public streets on which a proposed subdivision fronts. Additional frontage improvements shall include sidewalks, curbing, storms, sewers, sanitary sewer water lines, other public utilities as necessary, and such other improvements as the city shall determine to be reasonably necessary to serve the development or the immediate neighborhood. Two, project streets. Streets within the subdivision shall be constructed as required by the engineering standards. Three, monuments. Monuments shall be established as required by the engineering design standards. Four, surface drainage and stormwater system. Drainage facilities shall be provided within the subdivision to connect to the subdivision drainage, to drainage ways or storm sewers outside the subdivision. Design of drainage within the subdivision shall be constructed in accordance with the engineering design standards. In the circumstance where existing stormwater lines are adjacent to or within the project, a system development charge is required in accordance with the city's adopted system development charge ordinance. Five, sanitary sewers. Sanitary sewers shall be installed to serve the subdivision and to connect to the subdivision to existing mains both on and off the property being subdivided, complying to the engineering design standards. City may require that the developer construct sewer lines of a size in excess of that necessary to adequately service the development in question where such facilities are or will be necessary to serve the entire area within which the development is located when they are, when the area is ultimately developed. The city may also require that the construction take place as an assessment project with such arrangement with the developer as is desirable to assure his share of the construction. In the circumstance where existing sanitary sewer lines are adjacent to or within the project, a system development charge is required in accordance with the city's adopted system development charge ordinance. Six, water system. Water lines with valves and fire hydrant service serving the subdivision and connecting the subdivision to the city mains shall be installed in accordance with the engineering design standards. The design shall take into account provisions for extension beyond the subdivision to adequately grid the city system and to serve the area within which the development is located when the area is fully developed. However, the city will not expect the developer to pay for the extra cost of mains exceeding eight inches in size. In the circumstance where existing water lines are adjacent to or within the project, a system development charge is required in accordance with the city's adopted system development charge ordinance. Seven, sidewalks. Sidewalks shall be installed on both sides of each public street and in any pedestrian ways within the subdivision. Sidewalks shall be constructed at time of development of the subdivision. Streetlights. The installation of streetlights is required at locations and of a type required by city standards. Nine, street signs. Installation of street name signs and traffic control signs is required at locations determined to be appropriate by the city and shall be of a type required by city standards. Ten, other requirements. Curb cuts and driveway installations are not required of the developer at the time of development. But if installed, shall be according to the city standards. Street tree planting is not required of the developer, but if planted, shall be according to city requirements and of a species compatible with the width of the planting strip and underground facilities. At least one tree will be located in the planting strip. An additional tree shall be planted either in the planting strip or yard adjacent to the street or straits. Trees must be planted and viable prior to occupancy. Completion of improvements. All improvements required under this chapter shall be completed to city standards or assured through the performance bond or other instrument acceptable to the city attorney prior to the approval of the final plan of the subdivision. And no case shall the bond exceed 5% of the remaining project improvements as determined by the city engineer. Staff findings, per the KED engineering comments in Section 2 above, the development will require traffic impact study. An increase of 300 trips is the threshold at which a study is required, considering all phases of development. Average daily trips would increase by a minimum of approximately 1,480. A one-foot wide reserve strip should be dedicated to the city at the end of each incomplete street. All hammerheads-style fire department turnarounds should be constructed as temporary measures. It appears that this applies to exhibit E2, east end of A Street, B Street, C Street, D Street, and Coulter Lane. Any additional hammerheads that are being put in place until a subsequent phase of street construction is initiated, as indicated in the plan. All streets that will be extended into subsequent phase of construction should end with a cul-de-sac as opposed to a hammerhead. Streets that were identified as streets that will not be extended in a subsequent phase of construction are described as eastern end of C Street, eastern end of A Street, eastern end of Coulter Lane, and southern end of 46th Avenue. Streetlights will need to be installed at the appropriate locations. All new streetlights in the subdivision shall be in aluminum material with an anchor pier. The light fixture itself shall be an LED luminaire and should conform to Oregon PUC rules. Per the Public Works Engineering comments in Section 2, the waterline on 43rd Avenue will allow the proposed tie-in shown in the design. The waterline entering the subdivision from 43rd Avenue, six-inch water main tap will need to be an eight-inch C900 PVC line. The eight-inch PVC water line serving this subdivision will need to be looped and tied back into our existing eight-inch Deppow iron water main on 46th Avenue. The design calls for a sanitary sewer tie-in on 43rd Avenue into an existing 10-inch sewer line. However, the existing sewer line on 43rd Avenue is only an eight-inch concrete line. The design also shows the existing sewer on Coulter Lane being a six-inch concrete line and is an eight-inch concrete line. The existing sewer line size on Coulter Lane will be sufficient, but the 43rd Avenue eight-inch line will need to be upsized to a 10-inch 30-to-34 PVC from A Street tie-in north to Monica Street, which will tie into our existing building line. Our subdivision stormwater system outlets into 43rd Avenue ditch would need to see an engineered stormwater development report that shows pre and post development run operates to ensure the existing 43rd Avenue ditch has appropriate capacity. Staff shall recommend a condition of approval, but all that the applicant will apply of all improvement requirements listed in Sweet Home Misscule Code 1758060. Submitted requirements. All applications shall be submitted on forms provided by the city along with the appropriate fee. It shall be the applicant's responsibility to submit a complete application which addresses the review criteria of this section. The application shall include a statement explaining the proposal and providing analysis of the proposal relative to the approval criteria. Applicants for subdivision shall submit, one, a letter by 17th copy of the preliminary plan along with one digital copy. The preliminary plan shall include the box. General information following general. The following general information shall be shown on the tentative plan. The city map showing all streets, property line streams, floodplain, and with appropriate data to the local proposal. E north Aaron scale drawing, tax map and tax lot numbers, tax account on the subject property, dimensions and size in square feet or acres of the subject property. E name of the subdivision plan development. Two, existing positions. A, location of all existing easements within the property. B, location of city. Utilities, water, sanitary sewers, storm drainage, or within the adjacent property proposed for use to serve the development. C, the location and direction of water courses or drainage wells on the subject property. E, existing use of the property and current location of existing structures. It should be noted whether the existing structures are to remain or being removed from the property. E, direction of the drainage and appropriate grade of the providing streets. F, proposed streets, approximate grade and radius of curb. G, any other legal access to the subdivision other than a public street. H, contour lines related to an established benchmark. On city datum having the following minimum intervals. Areas of less than 5% slope, one-foot contours. Areas of slope between 5% and 10%, two-foot contours. Areas of slope greater than 10%, five-foot contours. Proposed plan, locations, approximate dimensions, and area in square feet of all proposed lots. All lots shall be numbered consecutively. Location with and purpose of any proposed easements. All areas to be offered public dedication. If any portion of the property is not proposed to be in. If any portion of the property is not proposed to be included in the subdivision or any public dedication, that portion shall be identified as a remnant parcel. A draft subdivision or development plan shall be included, showing how the proposed subdivision will provide needed access and utilities to serve future development of the remnant parcel in proposed phase. Staff findings. The applicant submitted application SD twenty-three dash zero-one on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Staff deemed the application complete on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. Conclusion and recommendation. Based on the findings discussed in section three above, staff recommends that the application be approved. The application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions system enrolled as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in section three above. Any modifications to the conditions listed below will require approval in accordance with provisions of law, which may vary in subsequent land use applications set. If the planning commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings of the review and design criteria in section three and as required by the Street Homelessness Code and the provisions of law. Appeals to land use board of appeals, Luba may only be based on review and design criteria listed above. Recommended conditions of approval. If the application is approved. One, final configuration of proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. Phase one includes forty-one residential lots and one stormwater tract. Phase two includes forty-three residential lots and one stormwater tract. Phase three includes forty-six residential and two stormwater tracts. Phase four includes twenty-seven residential lots. The subject properties are north of Coulter Lane, east of Forty-Third Avenue, south of Forty-Fifth Avenue, and south of Forty-S sixth Avenue. Subject properties are identified on the link guide. Tax assistance map is thirteen S zero-one E thirty-three D tax lots twenty-eight hundred and thirty-five O two. Lot sizes shall range from approximately seven thousand twenty-nine square feet to approximately twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven square feet. All lots shall be eligible to be developed for single-family dwellings or duplexes. Street Homelessness Code seventeen-one zero-point-zero-three here D and B. The subject properties are loaded into the R one zone. Two, the applicant shall comply with all requirements identified by the KET Engineering and Public Works Engineering Department comments in section two above. The applicant shall comply with all storm drainage and drainage requirements in Street Homelessness Code seventeen point four-six. The applicant shall comply with all utility lines and facility requirements in Street Homelessness Code seventeen point four-eight. The applicant shall comply with all street standard requirements in Street Homelessness Code seventeen point four-two. The new property line shall be situated to the all buildings and structures provided the yard setback requirements and residential load density. In addition to engineering design standards, improvements installed by a developer for any land division either as a requirement of these regulations or development, developer's options shall conform to the requirements of the Development Code. The improvement standards and specifications adopted by the city shall be installed in accordance with the following procedures. A, city approval required. Improvement work shall not commence until plans are approved by the city. All plans should be prepared in accordance with the requirements of the city. B, notification. Improvement work shall not commence until the city has been notified in advance, and if work has been discontinued for any reason, it shall not be resumed until the city has been notified. C, inspections. Improvements shall be constructed under the inspection and to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director or designated. The city may require changes in typical street sections and improvements if unusual conditions arise during construction to want such changes. D, installation of utilities. All underground utilities, sanitary sewers, storm drains installed by the developer shall be constructed prior to the servicing of the streets. Stumps for service connections for underground utilities and sanitary sewers shall be placed to eliminate the necessity for disturbing the street improvements when service connections are made. E, as-built drawings and plan or a map or plan showing all public improvements as built shall be filed with the Department of Public Works upon the condition of improvement for Street Homelessness Code seventeen point five-eight zero-seven zero. Eight, within two years of the final decision, the final approved plat or first phase shall be recorded with accounting if the first phase, final plat is not recorded within two years, preliminary approvals shall lapse, and new application shall be required. All phases of the approved plat shall be recorded within ten years of the final date of the decision. Nine, effective date of final plat approval. The approval process for development shall become final upon recording of the approved final plat together with any required documents with accounting. Approved final plats shall become void one year after final city approval if they are not reported. Ten, the applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to Public Works permits, development permits, including building permits and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a twelve-month C stormwater permit from the Department of Urban Quality and any department's state grants permits as applicable. Funding Commission action. In taking action on the subdivision, the Funding Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Funding Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff recommended conditions are included in section four. Appeal period. Staff recommends that the Funding Commission decision on this matter be subject to a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the notice that the decision is null. Order after the Funding Commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the Funding Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Funding Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions if any that apply to the approval. If the application is approved, if the application is motioned, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, Funding Commission has options to do the following. One, move to approve application SD twenty-three dash zero-one, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report and setting the twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chairperson of memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application SD twenty-three dash zero-one, including adopting the findings and setting up a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chairperson of memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue public hearing to a date and time certain, or four other.
Good job, Angela. I hope everybody digested every word. Okay, with that, let's invite the applicant to come forward.
Hey, Lyle, you want to unmute yourself and we'll see if we can hear you?
Pardon?
Good day. Hi, Mindy, can you hear me?
Uh, can you be a little bit louder, Lyle? This is Angela.
Oh, hi, Angela. Does that help?
Yeah, a little bit. We'll just have to tell everybody to be quiet in here.
I'm actually still on the move and trying to get to the office here in a few minutes, I hope, that I can get a better connection.
Okay, he just somebody knows he was on his way, there was a wreck. So he's trying to do this remotely. All right, so whatever you want to go ahead, Lyle.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening. My name's Lyle Hutchins, project planner. Mindy Cordell is there in the room with you. She and her husband Mark are the applicants for the project. I think Angela did a great job with summarizing the project and the staff report. We are in agreement with the findings in the staff report and with the proposed conditions of approval and ask for your approval of this application. And with that, I'll stop and see if I can answer any questions.
That's a loaded question. Are there any questions on the part of the planning commission?
I have a question. Given the density of these proposed subdivisions, did you give any thought to areas for that could be considered outside space? There potentially could be a hundred and forty some odd families with children, and children typically play in the street if they don't have any outside space, and I wondered if you could address that.
Yes, and I think staff brought that up as a recommendation also, and we are certainly okay with working with staff to basically prepare and construct some park at parks, if you will, at appropriate places there. We have included some pedestrian bicycle accessways to split up a few of those larger blocks, but we do recognize exactly your concern that there will be need for some playground-type areas.
Commissioner Journey, if I may butt in a little bit on that. I brought this up with them. As you may be aware, our code does not require the dedication of parkland, but we do charge system development charges, including system development charges intended just for parks. And so the way the city has chosen to move forward policy-wise is to collect that money from development, and then that would go toward the construction of a park. Now, the developer has the option, and one thing that we encourage is that if a developer wants to dedicate additional facilities that would fit within our plans for parks, for example, then the value of that land or work in development could be credited off of the system development charges for that subdivision. And so using that kind of system, there can be some give and take between the city and the developer to find something that is not only good for the development, but good for the homes in the immediate area of the development.
So if the applicant, if some of the applicant's system development charges go toward recreational development, there is no property to put that development on.
Right.
So that leaves the city with the onus of finding
Correct.
some property that it could afford, was local, et cetera.
Correct. And right now, we're going through a Parks Master Plan process to identify the areas especially needed for additional parks and specific identify specifically what size we would be looking for in those areas. But for example, also, if a developer said, well, you know, I'd rather save that money on the system development charges, an option would be to take some of the lots within the development and say, I would like those lots to become the neighborhood park, and then the city would give a discount on the system development charges for all the rest of the homes in the subdivision. Or we would take the money from all those system development charges and buy a park or buy land elsewhere in the immediate vicinity that would be used for a park.
If there was land available.
If, yes, correct. However, I would, there is quite a bit of vacant land in the, in this part of town.
So I understand what you're saying. It's all hypothetical.
It is.
And it's not in the conditions of approval.
You are correct. It is not in the condition because it's not a requirement of our code.
Right, and that's a concern.
Um, Lyle, it's Commissioner Laura Wood here. I have a question just about the planning and the planning and developing of this plan. Can you talk to me about, you know, the, the frame of mind of creating this plan? Because I do know that you left the lots a little bit larger than our minimum requirement, but you did fit about as many houses as you possibly could into these two lots. And so just tell me about your planning for this community and what, when you were building the subdivision, what you were thinking about and what you were planning for this community and how you kind of see this community coming together in our town.
Um, well, basically, is, a lot of this was terrain-driven, so to speak, so that closer to Forty-Third is generally the flatter part of the property and most conducive to having the minimum lot sizes. And as it moves to the east, the terrain increases considerably there, and because of that, we've got some of the larger lots in the later phases. Part of the planning also is that phase one does not have any impacts to delineated wetlands. And from a community standpoint, we tried to provide good connectivity and again, keeping the lots at as close to minimum lot size as possible will help try to create some affordable projects in there. And don't want to get into a definition of what affordable is, but at the same time, keeping some higher density does help with the cost for the development.
So just as a follow-up to that question, so I'm then correct in assuming that the, that the larger lots that are in phase three and four, although the lots are larger because of the, the incline of those lots, the, the lot is larger, but there would be really not much more usable lot space around the home because of the, the terrain?
Correct. That's, that's our anticipation is that because of the terrain, we wanted to provide some larger lot sizes and the, kind of the physical shape of the property as we go to the east there changes how the street pattern works, so. But that's exactly right, is, is basically terrain-driven so that we're not anticipating duplexes necessarily on those lots, but to have at least sufficient buildable area for single-family residents.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I have a few. Even though the land to the east is forested and probably mostly in the hands of one company, and then last this also of the city staff, what is the chance or likelihood that property to the east would ever have any further development?
So the property to the immediate east is outside the city's urban growth boundary as well as our city limits, and so the only way that could be brought into the city is through an urban growth boundary expansion. Those are very difficult, especially if you're a city of our size with the amount of developable land that we already have with on our urban growth boundary. And so in the, you know, next twenty years or so, I would find it extremely unlikely that any property to the east would come into the city's jurisdiction.
Okay, now I have observed some of the comments that hammerheads and cul-de-sacs were intended to be temporary. And even though we have these circumstances to the east, I've been around long enough that I've seen urban both, urban growth boundaries change. So they do change, however difficult, but they do change from time to time. And it has always been a precedence in the city for one property owner to develop to the next property owner so that they could pick up there and develop their own property. With that in mind, what I do observe is that, if I look at it right, I think there's only one street that is stubbed out that could go into the east. I was a little concerned about that.
So let me also clarify, the immediate east of this property, that angled line, that's a, essentially a hillside. So not only is it running up against the urban growth boundary, but it's also running against, up against topography. And it's, while certainly with modern technology, you can do all sorts of things to get a road built to different places, it is really expensive. And so I've... And so I, I don't think there's much hope in the way of road connections to the east. I think any road connections to other developable property would be to the north and with a little bit to the south. And then that portion that you see, kind of in the middle on the south, on the map that's on the screen, it, there's, it says E-14. That's an existing, existing home and, and fields, basically, is an existing farm that's there. So certainly, there's hope for, there's, there's reason to think that someday that might develop. And so you might have some connectivity between that southered portion of Phase 4 and the eastern portion of Phase 2. Those could possibly connect to each other. But as far as anything to the east of Phase 4, there's really not much to, that we could foresee.
I know that there's a pretty good hill there. But if that's the case, what I think is probably C Street, why does it just end in stub without cul-de-sac or?
Yeah. I'll turn this back over to Lyle. Since this isn't a staff matter, that's more of a, of an applicant question.
Okay. Well, I can direct that to Mr. Hutchins.
It looks like we lost him.
But it seems like we've given a little thought, the potential development to the east, but not very much thought. One of the streets ends, you know, like it could develop on through, and the others are all ending in cul-de-sacs or hammerheads. It seems like we're not being consistent.
And, and that's something I would, I would ask Mr. Hutchins, but unfortunately, it looks like we no longer have him on the connection. Mindy, do you by any chance have any thoughts on that? Okay. Oh, he's back.
I'm sorry. Got, just went off the air for some reason.
Mr. Hutchins, the question was the, talking about the end of the streets on the eastern end, there's A Street that ends in a, in a hammerhead, B Street ends in a cul-de-sac, C Street ends in a hammerhead, and then the southern end of 46th Avenue ends in a hammerhead. The question was really, what, what is the thinking behind that? And what future connectivity options do you see for those streets?
It, yeah, it was basically terrain-driven as far as our thought process goes there, that it would be a real significant amount of earthwork to maintain typical street grades to make those connections. I think we extended the southerly east-west street to a point that it would logically have the best opportunity to make the connection to the east. But, you know, depending on what you all think, we can sure make some further provisions for connectivity there. I think, just wanted to recognize that it does create the possibility of construction issues.
Well, as, as an example, B Street ends in a cul-de-sac. Now, the whole purpose of this discussion is, will there ever be development further to the east? The cul-de-sac could end in a hammerhead, which then could get further access to the east. The really still steep hill doesn't begin immediately. And there is a potential of some other development, in my opinion. So.
I think that's the thinking behind C Street ends, ending in that hammerhead. And that would be the connecting point to anything further east.
Yes, but that's only one of several streets.
Well, sure.
So anyway, let's table that for the moment. Some of my other questions were the naming of streets. And we have in the past tried to name streets consistently.
Those are, those are temporary names.
Okay.
The, the city does have a naming convention, largely tree streets. And so we would work with the developer to have appropriate.
When would we expect to have a traffic study?
The, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Blair. Yeah, we would anticipate doing the traffic study and submitting that with the first phase of the preliminary plat to review along with the first phase review for public improvements.
And what about the timeline for the wetlands survey?
That would really depend on market conditions and absorption of the Phase 1 lots. But I think we would expect to be working on a wetlands fill permit within the next 24 to 36 months.
So, Lyle, I'm going to break in here. This is Angela. So if you look in your packet, the delineation report has been done. So they are done with the report. It's just any, at this point, it's just any filling grade permits that the DSL would require. The report is done and is out and it's part of your packet. So that part, they have already completed.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Regardless of what is approved tonight, if anything is to be approved, then they would still have to go through DSL for those permits and any mitigation efforts. And just to put some context on it, we, a number of years ago, approved Duck Hollow Phase 3 subdivision. One of the reasons why that's still not built is because of the DSL permits, and they have made some changes as well. And so these things, this is kind of the way that works. And, and we would defer to the state for how to handle those, those impacts.
Okay. Well, another question. I know we try to get a maximum number of lots, but this whole project has traffic challenges. And with this many houses, and I just wonder why Street B and Street D, if you don't come directly out to 43rd Avenue and connect, it seems to me like would alleviate some of the traffic problems.
I think we were expecting 43rd to essentially act like a collector street and generally, we end up with wider intersection spacings on collector streets to basically help control traffic and the, and the turning movements and the impacts then to all the traffic that moves on 43rd. But that, that was our reasoning there is we thought of 43rd as being a little more than just a local street.
Commissioner, I have a comment on that, if you, if I may.
I'm sorry, speak up.
I said I have a comment on that, if I may. The, when you're, the design of local streets has a huge impact on speeding. As anybody who's traveled on First Avenue knows, you having a very long local street results in people using it as a shortcut and taking, and speeding through and increasing their speed. When you have only certain streets that can get into a subdivision, it limits that speeding. And so if you had more streets that connect directly over to 43rd, it's going to increase that tendency for people to speed along to get that, to that connection. And so it, it does help to have not as many direct connections to 43rd.
And what is the city's long-term plan for 43rd?
It would still be, it would be a collector. It's, it's not an arterial street, but a collector street.
So as a collector street, do we look forward to strong drainage and widening?
Oh, sure. Well, that, that's one of the reasons for requiring a traffic impact study is to determine, you know, what improvements are necessary to 43rd to facilitate the traffic. And so as with, with all of our streets, we look to what, to see what the impact would be. We do collect a transportation SDC also, which is designed to, to channel money from new development into that system so we can make road improvements. But yes, all of our streets can eventually be improved with traffic control devices, widening, and so forth. The traffic impact study is what determines exactly what improvement needs, is needed.
So with the current planning, we can anticipate that there probably widening on the street that is adjacent to this project. But is there a nexus for the strong drainage, say, to Long Street?
Certainly. And Lyle, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes, we have anticipated some additional right-of-way dedication along 43rd and in essence, what we'd call a full half-street improvement, which would be half of the street width, improve to city standards, curb and gutter, planter strip and sidewalk across the frontage of the culture subdivision property there.
And would this by any chance be extended, say, to Long Street? Certainly, there's a nexus, nexus issue here.
Yeah, it would, would not be typical. That continuing connection would be made as those properties to the north redevelop, so to speak, and the improvements made. So it would be pretty tough to, unless the traffic report came back saying that those street improvements were necessary, it'd be pretty tough to make that nexus.
Any other questions? Yes.
Can I call a recess for, okay. Lyle, we're taking a recess for a bio break.
Great. Thank you. Has my reception improved?
You seem to be coming through just fine.
Okay. Thank you.
For our audience, when we resume, we will very shortly invite comments from the audience, those that are in favor and those that are in opposition. Thank you for your patience.
Commissioners, just as a reminder also, if you are wanting to speak, it has to be up here and you have to give your name and address. Once you're back in the audience, you have to wait. So it's only up here, only during public, so it's just a reminder. We all have this, and then to the one who yelled out comments. If you want to come up and have a comment, just make sure you do it up here. Can you say, tell me what, where Long Street is? It's cut off. It's north. So it's not on here at all?
Okay, we'll resume at 7:58. Are there any other questions?
I have, I have a question for Mr. Hutchins about the planting strip. What do you anticipate, how do you anticipate the planting strips will be developed? I know we require a tree, but I wondered if you had some other ideas?
Mr. Hutchins, if you're trying to respond, you're muted right now. So you'll have to unmute. Looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything.
Blair, is that for me?
There you go. You're back.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What was the question now?
The question was the intentions for the planting strip of how that would be developed.
Basically, that would be street trees and ground cover.
So have you considered any non-water requiring ground cover, given that it's 2024 and access to water increasingly gets more expensive? If we're trying to create a neighborhood where people can afford to live within their means, sometimes water service charges get onerous. And I wondered if you had any thoughts about that?
Yes, absolutely. There are, when I say ground cover, it could be as simple as bark mulch. We are used to using some pretty hardy, drop-resistant, low-growing ground cover-type plants that are available. Generally though, to facilitate the growth of the street trees and their establishment, we do end up putting some kind of drip irrigation system in those planter areas to be sure that the street trees survive. So. But at once everything's established, there's generally no need to water those planter strips.
I am a little bit biased because my opinion is, is that many of our beauty strips are not very beautiful. I am not opposed to a sidewalk adjacent to the curb, and I'll just leave that as a statement.
I have a question. I know that 43rd Avenue right now, that's awfully loud. 43rd Avenue isn't going to handle a lot of extra traffic right now. Is the traffic study going to address the extra traffic? And how much, when 43rd is going to be developed? This whole development is going to be a lot of extra traffic. 43rd is going to need to have some work done on it. And is the city going to pay for that?
So is that a question for staff or a question for the applicant?
I think it's more for staff.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to remind the commission, right, right now is, is time for question for, for the applicant. Later, there'll be, I don't want to. Uh, later there'll be, I don't want to hijack their, their time, but I, I can address that if you, at the proper time, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Hutchins address it if he wishes.
Okay, well, Mr. Hutchins, it seems like we're out of questions for you right now. Stay online because we'll give you an opportunity to respond to other comments in our meeting.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Thank you.
So with that said, uh, let's invite anybody in the audience who would like to come forward that has signed in or would like to speak in favor of the application. Okay, this is the interesting part of the meeting. We would invite anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition. Please come forward, state your name and address.
If you would start with the list in front of you. I would recommend.
I'm sorry, I may have to apologize. Katie Vineyard? I don't have to apologize, we were lucky.
Hi, I'm Katie Vineyard. I live at 4309A Long Street. Um, so this development, I guess, would be just north of me, south? Well, whatever. It's by me. It's by me and I'm not for it, so. You guys were talking a lot about the hammerheads. I know this is phase four, but as I look at this, there's a hammerhead here. Here's the hammerhead, and the lots come together. I know that, uh, in the last development that I was not for, that was a big thing that the fire department didn't like. And to me, that is not a temporary hammerhead. And there are other ones on here that are similar. So this one, I believe, was on C Street. And then there's one on A Street that goes up and just stops, and then that's the property. So I feel like that would be a fire hazard for the fire department, so I really don't agree with that, even though that wasn't in what I came to talk about. I was concerned about a traffic study being connected, conducted. Uh, street improvements, are they going to be completed mainly so that two vehicles can pass each other? Because still, at the end of 45th, which will be at some point one of the entrances, 45th to Long Street, one person has to pull out before another one turns in because the street is not wide enough. They did one of the half improvements, which helps towards that end, but it does not help 45th to Long Street. And so that's going to be a major concern, having this many more houses be able to have that entrance, even though it may be phase two. Also, I noticed that a lot of these have a 45-foot width of roads. I know during the last development, everybody said that they wanted 50. And so that's another concern of mine. We don't know what the width is right over here in like the old airport, but I was back in there where some of the hammerheads are, and similar to this one where it just ends with properties. There is no room because so many people have three, four cars anymore because families are living together because it is expensive, and there is no parking. I mean, I would be very concerned if I lived down there and there was a fire. And this is very close and a lot of houses together. Um, the developer has not constructed drainage on the SD 2202, according to their proposal, which is in violation of the City Code 14 dot 46 dot 040. They are not to cause damage to properties or persons in the drainage basin. And is this going to be the same way? And what I'm talking about, the SD 22 dash 02, is the Naughty Pine. We are still dealing with water back there. They have the city out there constantly. They've had a plumber out there several times. And this is still not solved. So everything drains downhill. I mean, if I drop something, it's going down. The water is going to be the same way. So you've got all of this above us. You've got a 18 subdivision that has still not been developed because of water, and now you're going to be adding more. Um, there's concerns about the excess runoff and inadequate stormwater systems now. Um, development will only make the matter worse. When natural vegetation is replaced with an improvised surface, the natural cycle is altered, increasing stormwater runoff and reducing groundwater recharge. The result is more frequent flooding, higher flood peak flow, lower base flow in streams and lower water table levels, which affect local wells. And you're in the area where there are still wells at because you are on the outside of city limits, so there are definitely still wells that it will affect. This development is mostly situated on inventoried wetlands. Wetlands destruction increase flood and drought damage, nutrition runoff and water pollution. Let me repeat, wetland destruction increases water pollution in the streams of the local municipal water supply, not to mention degradation of associated plants and adequate life. Um, I have a map here of the inventoried wetlands. I mean, that's a lot of wetlands, and not to mention 45th, even in the summertime, has water that is draining down the ditch. Um, another concern is elementary school capacity concerns. As recently as 2021, the school district had to make attendance boundary changes for Hawthorne Elementary to accommodate students due to incoming families as a result of developments. These changes impact families who may lose district transportation to dependent care providers, not to mention physiology stress as sudden changes in schools can lead to feelings of uncertainty and instability in a child's life as they have to adapt to a new environment, make new friends, and adjust to different teaching styles. And when I'm saying transportation, when you're changing districts and, you know, a friend is fairly close, that bus is no longer going to run there, and it can be a huge impact on families. Um, I'd also just like it to be noted that it took me about eight weeks this last year of calling code enforcement before Cortle's property of the Naughty Pine on 45th was mowed. And Cortle Construction doesn't seem to me to maintain their properties before building and selling them. And so now you're going to start something else when things are not being maintained. And, um, still with the violation of not running the water how it should, I just don't want this proposal to be the same way, saying they're going to do something, and then it not being followed through and done. Because it's really frustrating being somewhere and seeing this and living with it and dealing with water. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions? We would invite Kay Thrash to come forward.
Hello, my name is Kay Thrash. My address is 1118 47th Avenue. And it borders the northeast corner of this development. And I did have a two-page letter, um, that you all have a copy of. It outlines just kind of a assortment of concerns. Much like Katie, the, uh, water runoff issue. I have up to two inches of running water on my field in the wintertime. It comes off that hill. That hill is owned by Hill Timber, managed by CTC. I doubt it's ever going to be developed, and it's got a lot of water that comes off of it. And if there's not a lot of mitigation done, it's, it's going to cause real problems. And the mitigation itself may cause additional problems, as Katie said. Anytime you replace natural vegetation with hard surface, you're going to have more runoff. It's going to affect the streams, it's going to affect the wells. I have a well on my property, and it's mostly kind of a surface water type well. They don't have real deep wells on that particular area to the north of this property. And so it's just a lot of little concerns about that. The number of houses, how small they are, um, has a tendency to lend, you know, people turning them into rentals, and then the people that have moved in say, oh, I don't want to live by a rental. And it just, it seems like all these little tiny houses are going to lead to a transient type situation instead of building a neighborhood and a home, you know, that's, this is sweet home. This isn't Portland. You know, we don't need little 7,000 square foot properties. The 8,000, which it used to be before they changed the size requirement, was a little bit better. When I did my annexation and division, it was 8,000 square feet. My neighbors, uh, the Arthers also, it was 8,000 square feet. We're like, where'd 7,000 come from? Apparently it was changed, the end of 22, down to 7,000 square feet. Yeah, and so that's, that's a concern. To have that many houses on this development, that many people crammed into that space that has historically been all open field. 90% of the properties around it are larger properties. Anywhere from a third of an acre up to 40 acres. You know, there's, there's a lot of open space in that area, and this has no open space in this development.
We probably can't address the size of the property, that's already established.
Yeah, I, I see that they recommend approving it. Um, we've always been told that the roads had to be 50 feet wide. And this plan is 40 feet or 45 feet. What happened to 50 feet? The city's always said it's got to be 50 feet, so we have room for the utilities, sidewalks, and the beauty strip. I don't think that's changed. The fire department requires hammerheads and/or.
The city administration and engineering are going to dictate what the minimum maximum would be. We really don't dictate that as a planning commission.
No, but you, you can make recommendations on what you want to see on the application and the final approvals.
Yes, we're making notes.
So, you know, it, it's just, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. You know, if everybody else has to do 50 feet right-of-ways, then why isn't this 50 feet? You know, that, that's a question. Um, I already talked about the.
I need to make one other mention.
Okay.
Just in, in fairness to you and to the others, if we can hold our testimony to about five minutes.
Okay, how long have I talked? Three?
I don't know, you've done wonderful.
Okay, I'm almost done. Um, yeah, I have the same concerns that I think several people here have regarding the flooding that historically occurs on Long Street. From 43rd to 45th, when it rains, generally the ditches overflow. And we have standing water in the street and that kind of thing. And this development is not going to help that issue any unless it is developed, like you say, and they put in storm drains. We all pay it. I pay it. We don't have any storm drains on 47th. You know, so if we pay it and it's going into a fund to install storm drains at some point, it would be nice if they got installed, especially on Long Street. Because a ton of water comes off that hill.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You have any questions?
Point of order, this, I just want to reiterate, this is a, a public hearing, it's not a question and answer session. If, if any of the public have questions about current, current city rules, city staff are more than happy to discuss that outside the meeting and let you know what the, what is in our code right now. Um, and when, if there were any changes, we're happy to go over when those changes happened. Um, but this is a meeting for the planning commission and not a back and forth question and answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Joyce and/or Bill Krebs. Come forward, say your name and address.
My name is Eric. Uh, my name is Joyce Krebs. Uh, I live on Long Street, 4305 Long Street. And, uh, they, we have a water issue, big water issue. And, uh, Public Works just keep coming out there and working on it, and they're trying to act like it's our fault. Well, it's not. It's, they're doing that development back there. They've made it, cleared it all off. And now we got more water coming our way. I've put in, uh, drains. And I had our, and I had 22 loads of dirt brought in and, uh, lines going across to our other big drain. And they had it all taken care of until I started working back there. And, uh, I had some pictures, but I didn't bring them. Um, I forgot my phone. But the flood that we had, I mean, it's, it's just unreasonable. And Mr. Blair keeps calling, saying they're working on it, but I don't see him doing much. The Public Works did come out and they said there was some rocks in there. They cleared that out. And we had rocks stacked around the culvert. And when we got all that water, it knocked them down and it did push some of them in the culvert. But we didn't put them in there because I didn't want to stop the culvert up. That's why we put it there in the first place. And then they run a camera in there. They couldn't see anything in there. I was over there and I looked. So, uh, and they still, you know, don't know what they're going to do. Huh, Blair?
That's nothing.
Oh, you, do you know what you're going to do?
We are, that's a pretty big issue, and it's not actually related to this particular thing.
No, I know it's not, but I, but I.
But it is in process, I agree. It does need to be fixed still. It has, there's more to it than that. Uh, it is a different issue, and so I.
I know it is. Well, but they have a say-so about it.
Yes, but this particular meeting is about this subdivision.
I know, I, well, I know, but, but if I don't keep dinging, you guys aren't going to do anything.
And, and we, I have, we have, staff have met with the subdivision about that same issue. We've already talked it over. There's not going to be building activity until this thing gets figured out. We've already discussed.
Okay, alright.
So that.
But I'd like to know about it, too.
Yeah, and, and once, and I, and I just talked with you last week about it.
I know, I know.
So I don't have any more information.
Okay.
I will get it to you.
Okay, alright, well, I, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. We now have, uh, is it Dave?
I've got nothing to add to that.
He's my neighbor and he's got words, too.
She brings my government.
Looks like somebody by the name of Fudd. I, I'm probably, I'm probably missed. Anyway, 955 45th. And state your name clearly because I can read.
Yes, my name is Cindy Hovater. I live at 955 45th Avenue. And the name is spelled H-O-V-A-T-E-R. And everything I've heard from the people in the audience, I live it. I live at the little square there at the end of 45th Avenue. And I did have Public Works come out and they had to dig another trench because the water was filling up over the culvert. And on the other side of the street, it was filling up. I have to say, they were awesome to me. I didn't have any problem. They were there like that. And, uh, did a good job of it, even though their tractor sank about a foot into the dirt. Because it is saturated. It is so spongy. You walk out in the yard and you go down at least two inches. So as far as the water table, I'd say it's closer to floodplains than not. And everybody else, I agree, so that's pretty much all I have to say. I thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, we have, uh, Okay, we have, many? Cordell? Did I mispronounce that?
No, she's the applicant. So she's.
387-47 Scrabble Hill. We've already had, it looks like we have things on that too. So we've done it. Well, this is a loaded question. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment, neither in favor or opposition? And with that, we will close the public hearing at 8:25 and discuss it among the planning commission.
Well, I will start.
One more thing, Commissioner Wiltis. Typically, we offer the, the applicant an opportunity to rebut anything that's been brought up.
Thank you. I apologize and we'll get, we'll do that. So Mr. Hutchins, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
You've heard many comments from local citizens. And we would give you the opportunity to rebut any of their comments or clarify anything that they have said.
And Commissioner Wiltis, for the record, will you open it back up? And then we'll have to close it again.
Yep.
Pardon? Uh, reopen at 8:26.
Lyle, are you still there?
Yes. Is it, is it okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is an opportunity for you to rebut any, anything that was brought up by the opposing comments.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
It seems like many of those issues surrounded drainage and traffic, lot size. That's mostly what we've dealt with tonight. But the lot size, that's not an issue because that's already been, been established by our city.
Thank you.
Drainage and traffic are the big ones.
And I, I think if I may, one of the smaller ones had to do with road wits. Those road wits, as proposed, are also in accordance with the development code standards. With respect to drainage, overall, the design for the subdivision in total with respect to storm drainage will be in accordance with Oregon drainage law and city standards. We are proposing some water quality type rain gardens to help deal with water quality immediately off of the streets. And the stormwater tracks that were mentioned earlier would provide the detention capability in order to confine outlet flows to match historical undeveloped rates for each of the phases.
Mr. Hutchins, this is Commissioner Wood. You, those storm drainage and you mentioned rain gardens possibly are an idea for, how are those going to be maintained? Who will be in charge of maintaining those properties once the development is complete?
And generally, they are, the stormwater tracks are maintained by owners association under an established set of CCNRs.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So are you going to have a homeowners association?
Yes, we anticipate that, basically because of that requirement to maintain the stormwater facilities. Also, thank you. Also, with respect to traffic and the traffic study, the traffic study will also look at 45th and 47th and the impacts to those streets and the needs for improvement of those streets. We would anticipate the initial traffic study would look at all of that. And with Phase Two, likely there would have to be some updates to the traffic study based on current conditions at that point in time. But with each phase, a traffic study would be looking at the improvements to the streets. And certainly at the long street intersections of each one of those. And with that, I think I will stop.
Okay. Blair or Angela or Diane, do you have anything to comment on? And then we'll close the hearing.
I, I think the only, the only thing I would say is that, Lyle, I'm, I'm a little hazy on, still on some of the, and this isn't a requirement, it's just a curiosity. The hammerheads at the, at the northeast, that, the end of Street A, is that intended to perhaps someday connect to 47th?
That was our anticipation, yes.
Okay. And that's why it's not a cul-de-sac and, and it's more of a hammerhead style?
Correct, because that, you know, we could include right-of-way dedication completely to the east property line there. And we configured it that way because for exactly that reason is it provides the opportunity to serve the property to the east. Street C is really the same logic there. And was generally at C where I kind of felt like was the most important connection point. But at the same time, depending on future street pattern, extension of Street A completely to the east property line may be appropriate.
Okay. Was there ever any thought to looping around from, from A down to B, then down to C?
With the side slopes through that area, would be some pretty significant earthwork. And, you know, it could be done. We've anticipated pedestrian connection from, between B and C. But not a complete looping of public street between those.
Can we close it? We'll close the public hearing at 8:31. And have a discussion among the.
I have some major concerns about the wetland report. And they already mentioned wetland fill, which I do not enjoy as a plan for developing our town. There, there is significant amount of water on this property. And their plans plan to build homes directly on top of where there has been shown that we have, that there is significant water, standing water likes to sit on this property. Their plan for sewage drain, or like sewage drain tracks of land is something that we've seen in development plans before. But we've also seen recently problems with HOAs being able to maintain those or caring to maintain those. And this property, these ones are going to need to be maintained very well and built very well. I, I don't feel like the, the development plan put much thought into the community of Sweet Home and where they were building this in our town. But I do think they did a very good job of maximizing their space. This is after what I heard. Those are my comments, my concerns.
So I'll just echo what Laura was saying about HOAs and the maintenance of the drainage systems. So it's clear that this development meets all of our criteria. What it's lacking is a sense of community, a sense of a place where people feel comfortable living. I know we don't have criteria for that. But I think it's important to voice my concern about, as I mentioned earlier, where are children going to play? There's no concern here about families. There's concern about meeting the application requirements, but not about the people who will eventually live there. And that's a concern for me. And I think that's all I'll say at the moment.
The, the development meets all the criteria. We have an urban growth boundary for a reason. And we are supposed to, as we grow, fill up those empty spaces. And this is an empty space that this development would, would fill. They have addressed drainage. They have addressed the wetland issues. They have addressed the traffic in the development. The traffic study will address outside the development too. But we've got to, as I said, fill up the empty spaces. And this is one of the, the spaces. I think he's, the developer has done a good job of laying out the plan. And I see no reason not to approve it.
Just to comment on one of your comments. It is true that we're trying to fill empty spaces. There's also an interest in preserving agricultural property. I'm not saying that that's going to affect my, my decision, but it is currently agricultural property. So with that said. Blair.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible that we can do a continuation of this and hold off a decision until we see the traffic study and a more detailed drainage study?
So the traffic study would likely take enough time that we would be past the 120-day rule. And so.
Say that again.
So we, we have a, state law requires a decision within 120 days of a completed application. So that completed application date was December 20th, I believe. And so essentially, six months from December 20th, a decision has to be made by then. Now, obviously, we have some time. But typically, those kinds of traffic impact studies are intended to go into fair amount of depth and it would put us pretty close to not getting it approved in time. We, we do require those, but they're not required as part of the subdivision application. So if the traffic impact study is your concern, reiterating it among the conditions of approval would be the, the way to go with that, is my recommendation at least. The other matter, the drainage issues, or to, to know more about drainage. If you have questions about drainage that are not met by, or that, and you're not satisfied with the comments tonight or with what's in the plans, and you want to, to, them to develop something to address that, certainly you could, you, you could, we could bring the applicant up and see if there's something that they could do when it comes to fleshing out the plans more to, to satisfy that question. And that could be a reason to, to continue the meeting, yes.
I mean, what, he did mention that he planned, that the, the plan was wetland fill permits, which just means water displacement, which means it's just going off his property, off this property somewhere else. So that's what wetland fill is. It's, it doesn't absorb the water. It just displaces it, sends it somewhere else. Hopefully, it goes to their stormwater dra, tracks. But there's this, I mean, there's a significant amount that they need to make sure that they mitigate. And it's coming off the mountainside, which means that it could fluctuate greatly year to year based on the kind of weather that we have. And yeah, I don't, there, there's plans to create drainage. But they, it's just basic based on what they might think.
I, I would only add that they are, they are required to retain on-site any, any additional water that is, that is, that is present because it's not absorbed by the ground because of their impermeable surfaces. So to, to make that clear, when it comes to water that is currently flowing onto the property and off of the property, that water can continue flowing off of the property in that fashion as it, as it does now. If there is additional flow that is the result of their development activities, that additional flow must be, must be taken care of on-site. And so that's what the detention basins within the, within the development are intended to, to do. Ideally, those would be constructed in such a manner that they mimic wetlands. But that's, that's one of the requirements that is part of our building code, part of our engineering standards they would be held to.
The design just doesn't seem to leave enough space to do that.
And do you think we can accomplish that? There's an awful lot of hard surface roofs, concrete, back up. Let me just go on a little bit further. We have a friend that lives on 43rd, a single woman. I volunteered in the past to help mow her grass. And it's usually been about that much water on top. And I've been around a long time. I've been on the planning commission for a long time and the city council. And that whole area is always a drainage problem. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, frankly.
I, I don't, I'm not a wetland expert. I'm not a, an engineer. And I, all I know is that we have standards that we would, that we would hold their engineers to. As for the wetlands themselves, we usually defer to the state on what the state will, will approve because they are typically much more stringent than our, than our own rules. And so that, I would be, I mean, personally, given what I've seen from DSL and other developments, I'd be surprised if all of these lots were buildable. Given what typically comes back from DSL when it comes to what they will approve with fill and grade permits and such. So I get, I understand the concern. And I hate to pass the buck, but there are, there are other agencies that are more, more experts than we are at managing that. And we, we kind of naturally, because of that, defer to them.
This is probably a question that doesn't have an answer, but it seems like most of the water from this property eventually makes its way to 43rd, yep, and ditches. Is there a way to quantify how much water is leaving this property now? And be able to hold to that standard?
I, I think there's. Uh, I think there's certainly ways to measure the current flow. It's not a, an exact science, I don't think, because we, you know, if we had a pipe that was collecting it all, you could put a flow meter in it and get a pretty accurate reading of everything that was going through there. With open ditches, it's a lot harder to get that reading and you have natural evaporation and other things that, that make it less, it make it more difficult to know exactly. Could we take some measurements or, or get an idea? Probably, but it would be more along the lines of, of anecdotal observations and, and things of that nature. Because we're simply not equipped to get super accurate measurements that way.
I, I only say that because, you know, it would give us some fodder down the line. If, if there's a continued problem with drainage and water on people's property, we can say, well, okay, the same amount of water is leaving now as was leaving February 1st, 2024.
So what, what we would look at is we would look at the current conditions of, of what you would normally expect during a normal winter. Now, those vary greatly from year to year also to, and vary greatly depending on neighboring properties, activities and so forth. So it's, it's difficult to get an accurate measurement of what that would be. However, the, the standards that we have would indicate that whatever they, whatever flow that comes off of there, i- it's going to need to be handled in some way. And that's probably going to be improvements along 43rd. It'll certainly, it'll likely involve deepening that ditch and possibly all the way up to Long to get that, to allow for that flow to happen. So we, we, we do have a mechanism for how to, to monitor that and take care of it. Our current stormwater fees that we collect don't go into improvements. That basically pays for a position. And so it's a, it's paying the salary of a person to go out and work on the ditches and things like that. The comments about that people pay a fee and they don't have storm drains coming in. Well, that's because the fee is only large enough to pay for the person and not for the improvements. The improvements get paid for through our system development charges and through our requirements that we put on developers. And so when it comes to our system getting improved, development is the way that our system gets improved. You turn your microphone on.
Uh, you said there are other agencies that have the, the final say on some parts of this as far as development, uh, water mitigation. And so even if we approve it, this whole development may not happen.
Well, I, I wouldn't say, I would say that this development would be impacted by those agencies' decisions. And it would impact them when it comes to how many buildable lots there are.
But approving it would be approving this plan as it stands. I mean, for us, we would be saying this, we approve this plan.
Right. What, what would happen is they would, if we, if, if you approve this plan tonight, they would move forward with their development plans. Like Mr. Hutchins said, phase one would go in and is not really impacted by wetlands. And so, uh, there's not any mitigation that they would have to do during that phase. But the, the development of that phase would probably give them the capital to move forward with the next phases, which would involve applying for those permits through DSL, the Department of State lands. And depending what those, that process says, you know, they'd be looking at redesigning to accommodate whatever that permit process results in. And that could, that could result in more open space. It could result in, in certain areas being untouched. And, and therefore it would result in fewer buildable lots.
One other thing we agreed and addressed tonight. Our first application, of course, addressed the school district. You had 140 homes. And it's Hawthorne School. We, we inquired whether they could handle that much additional.
So the, the school district has been notified of this application. I don't believe we've received any comments from them.
They receive a notice. Anytime we put any of these out, they receive a notice of it.
Right. I did check the boundaries today and this is actually Foster Elementary and not Hawthorne. In previous conversations with Kevin Strong at the school district, Hawthorne was well situated to take additional students. I have not asked him specifically about Foster. The fact of the matter is population growth is going to change that no matter what. Now, certainly the speed of development would impact that. But this is something where we regularly report to the school district on developments that are happening and the pace of those developments. Uh, and so, uh, especially we, as soon as something like this was approved, they'd be aware that the subdivision was approved. We, we'd notify them. Once building activity actually starts, we would also keep them apprised of how fast the lots are being developed and, and how fast they're selling. So we, we try to work with the school district as much as possible. They understand that certainly this impacts their capacity, but it also impacts their funding. And so it, it's not a perfect system, but the funding does eventually follow these additional students. And that eventually does result in additional capacity at schools. It may have some uncomfortable hiccups along the way because nothing is ever a completely smooth road, but we do our best.
One hopefully last comment. 1,400 extra trips on 43rd is impossible.
I don't know. It might be. I- in its current state, probably. Um, when it comes to, and that's what the traffic impact study is for is I'm not a, a traffic engineer. I, I do, I did have a job in college. It was before some of the automatic systems and I, I got a temporary job helping out some friends who were in studying civil engineering and I had to have a clicker and count traffic that went by an intersection. And it's very surprising sometimes the capacity that an intersection has. Because those 1,400 cars, those average daily trips, usually it's 700 one way and 700 back. And you'd be surprised at how many of those, when they're spread out. I mean, they're going to spread out, be spread out throughout the day. It's really amazing how the streets can handle different levels. I'm not saying this definitely does. I'm just saying I would rather rely on the experts to, to look into how that, what, what that would look like.
Okay. Before we conclude, I'm going to ask each of you. Of course, we know what our choices are tonight is to approve it or disapprove it, approve it with conditions, et cetera. But if Blair communicates again with Mr. Hutchins, which he certainly will, what items would we like to have discussed? What are our great concerns?
I would like a subdivision this size to be built like a community. I'd like a subdivision with more than 100 houses.
Can you turn your microphone on?
I, I would like a, a subdivision of this size to be planned more like a community. Over 100 houses should have something that gives the people who live in that space a place to enjoy without having to get in their car and drive away. And I see two stormwater drain tracks.
I believe there's more if you dig into the plans.
Okay. I just see two on the, on the phase layout. I just see two designated on, on this map. Four, okay.
Are you proposing some kind of a park or?
I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing anything specific, but this is just a bunch of homes built on 40 acres. It's not a community for people to live in, but it is building houses.
Is Mr. Hutchins still?
It looks like he's still on the line.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We closed the
We've closed the public hearing. If, if you want to reopen it to bring the applicant back to address any questions, we, we can do that.
Well, it would be good for him to be part of this. I mean, to have a conversation.
It, it's
Okay, let's go on. Eva. What are your main concerns and what would you like to have addressed in the future with Blair and the city?
So I just will emphasize the topics that have already been mentioned. The storm drainage is a huge issue. The lack of concern for building a community is a huge issue. And I know he's not required to do that. But when a developer comes into a city and intends to make improvements, it would be, it would, it would increase my confidence in their sincerity if I saw that there was concern for the people who will be living there. And then my third concern is about the hammerheads. I know that the fire department is against hammerheads and I'm pro-fire department. I understand the talk about future development to the east. But I think that that, that those long-term concerns might be better eclipsed by thinking concretely, more seriously about cul-de-sacs. And I have one more comment. And that is, this is 2024. This development is proposed, looks like something out of 1960. And it's kind of embarrassing for me to represent an approval of something like this to the city as something we would like to see here 50 years from now. That's it.
I think I kind of already know your thoughts, Mary, but would you like to add anything to that list? I'm just going to make, Mike, that's the last comment or the last comment. I received my book today. This is a huge project. I spent a good part of the day reading it. I don't feel like I've had time to digest it very well. I don't know about the rest of you. I personally would like to see us continue this to a time certain, a month from now or two weeks from now even. And try to get more information on the traffic, on the storm drains. I think Laura's suggestion about making it more of a community appearance rather than 140 houses on this plot of ground. And that's just my opinion.
Will a continuance, does a continuance allow for any changes to the application? Like if he, if, if those comments, they wouldn't, he wouldn't be able to put it?
In, in the past, when we've had a subdivision and it's been continued, typically there was some issue that was, that was, that bothered the commission that they then redrew some things and, and had another proposal. The one I'm thinking of the most is the foothills drive subdivision where there was concern about the street width and the, how the, the existing street changed widths. And then there was a kind of a redesign with the, with shared driveways and things of, of how those would be worked out. And, and that worked with the, the applicant coming back with some modified plans. Certainly that's an option. The only, the only thing I would, I would caution you on is the criteria that are in the staff report is what is the basis of our, is what we can judge this on. And so unfortunately, when it comes to community look and feel and things of that nature, while I completely agree that I would like to live in a neighborhood that, that felt like that, that's not in our code. And now if we, if we want it to be, certainly that, that's something that we can, can move forward with. But it, that's unfortunately the, the situation that we're in right now doesn't allow approving or, or disapproving of it on that basis. Now, on the other items in the criteria, certainly those would be the, the things to look at.
Okay. As the assistant chairman and the one conducting the meeting tonight, I'd prefer not to make a a proposal, but I will entertain whatever the other three of you would like to do. And hopefully we don't spread it down the line.
Well, and I would also add, we are missing two of our number tonight. And so if that, that, that could play into your thoughts tonight as well.
So are you saying that we could possibly make a determination or be amenable to continuation because of our lack of more people? And that's a legitimate reason?
If, if you're split on the issue, certainly additional commission members would, would help. And that would, uh, continuing it to another meeting would solve that issue. If there are items that are within the criteria that you're genuinely concerned about and would like more details on, such as traffic and, and stormwater detention. And, uh, you know, perhaps even what contingency plans are depending on what DSL comes back with, then more information could be requested of the applicant. I would only, I, the only concern I have about that is just making sure that we're specific enough that they can provide what, what you're looking for. If you, if you do want to discuss with the applicant about options for modifications, you are welcome to reopen the public hearing and invite the applicant back up to, to discuss anything that's, that are possible modifications.
If we're going to discuss modifications, I would definitely prefer to do that with more people on our board, with our type of members, maybe if we can. Um, I think that is most appropriate if that's what is the determining factor.
Do we have a proposed new member or not?
We are unfortunately still without a seventh planning commission member. We keep on advertising it.
And this one will be here with us probably next time. Somebody make a motion.
I, I would advise, if you are planning on continuing it, I would advise asking the, opening it back up to ask the applicant if they have some, any scheduling conflicts that would prevent them from being present in a future meeting.
We will reopen this public hearing at 9:02. And Mr. Hutchins, we've assumed that you've heard most of this. Are you still there?
Yes, sir.
So Lyle, this is Angela, if I can interrupt real quick. So if you are going to continue it, um, the next meeting is February 15th or the one after that is March 7th. So we'll need to choose, or even if you want to go farther than that, I can find the date, but we'll need to declare a specific date.
So as commented on by the city staff, how would this work for you if we had a continuation of this meeting to February 15th or March what?
March 7th, February 15th, March 7th or March 21st.
Would probably suggest March 7th because maybe we can get a traffic study on that.
A traffic study takes months and months. It will, it will not.
Okay. So, Mr. Hutchins, we'd welcome your input now.
Would recommend March 7th. And Blair is entirely correct that the traffic study takes a considerable amount of time. But we can try to at least But we can try to at least get some conceptual information with respect to what the traffic study scope of work would be so that have that to consider.
Okay, we we appreciate your understanding on that. And I'm sure the staff is taking notes tonight, and you'll be in communication with them. And it would give us a little additional time to work through the materials that we already have. And for you to have a little time to consider some of our comments. So if that's all, we'll close the public hearing.
We appreciate your pride to admit additional information, too. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the hearing at 9:04.
So you you do need a motion to continue the this to a future meeting.
Eva's falling down on her jaw, and we started tonight, I should be sure.
Sure, it's definitely Eva's fault.
So let's let's have a motion of some kind.
Okay, I move to continue the public hearing to March 7th.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That worked out pretty darn good.
But you're you need to end the meeting if you're done with the meeting, sir.
End the meeting.
Unless you have anything else.
End the meeting at 9:05.
Thank you.
I think you're starting to like this gavel. We're through.
This is the applicant.
Yes.
If we're required to do a.